My call that town brought the public safety meeting to order. President, our councillor, Mayor, councillor Adam Chino and. Any communication? I will take a motion to approve the minutes from October 29th, 2020.
Oh, you're welcome. Oh. I didn't push you.
Okay, motion made by councillor Merritt, seconded by councillor Chino. Any additions or corrections? Okay, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion moves unanimously. Okay, moving on to our new business, which is ambulance service funding formula referral. Have been talking about this for three months, three months now. I thank everybody for all of their work on this. I'm excited to talk about it tonight. Members. If we could start this by everybody on the table introducing themselves.
My name is Chuck Kinnicki, I'm the president of Groton. Robert McDonald, vice president. Robert McDonald, Mr. President.
Um. Interested in presenting this?
Um, I can if you'd like.
I'm just gonna get a little background, so we've talked about this for quite some time. The goal of this is to try to figure out how we can equitably fund both Mystic River Ambulance and Groton Ambulance. There have been, there's been a lot of talk about how we can do that and maybe you have some numbers. Some of the background on this is that there's been a difficult time trying to find someone else in the last few years. I'm post nine eleven, or post COVID, sorry. That a lot of, there's a lot of service that might not get funded either because of the fact that, because of the fact that you're not actually transporting, so if there's not a transport, you don't get any money, or because Medicare, Medicaid, TRICARE does not cover as much as
Per cent.
Costs as a percentage, yeah. And much of that percentage is done, is set by the federal or state government, correct?
Correct.
And then the other thing that got brought up in here is inflation and high chain, which is difficult. Just to keep up with that, everyone, am I missing anything on?
Not that I can go. It basically just makes it more of a formula instead of an arbitrary number that we sit here during budget deliberations and try to justify and have you guys pick through everything. It's kind of a screen line, if you will. And it's based on the number of calls and the call volume that we respond to instead of what we might respond to or we are preparing to respond to. We've had Bob Holdsworth, who has extensive history in emergency medicine, majority of it in the billing aspect of it, and he was able to put it into a formula that fits for ourselves and Mystic River Ambulance. As far as I know, I don't want to speak on their behalf. But if you look at last year's budget request, 2023, 2024, we received $300,000, I'm on page six. We received $300,000 for 5,500 calls, which is cost to the town of $54.45 per 911 response. Mystic River's budget was $85,000 and they're a little different in the fact that they respond to two towns, Stonington and Mystic River, I'm sorry, Stonington and the Groton side of Mystic. They responded to 1,400 calls, which would be a total of $60.71 per response. We went through our budgets halfway. I believe Mystic River sent the information to Bob Holdsworth and we tried to do a projection of what we would need per call. And option one, the Groton Ambulance 2025, 2026 budget request, based on the formula that we have come up with, would be $360,000 and Mystic River's would be $84,000. And like it says, the weak spot in this method is if the call volume drops, which realistically we don't see happening.
It isn't happening.
If, if anything, 2025 right now is turning out to be one of our busiest years. We're on the, what is today, the 28th? And I think we're in the 400s already. So we're gonna average somewhere around 400 to 500 calls a month and I'm not.
That'll be definitely straight.
So. So option one is a flat rate and that would give us $360,000 and give Mystic River $84,000.
Just to break that down for people who might not have this in front of them, that's $60 for 6,000 productive calls for Groton.
Yes.
$60 a call for 1,400 productive calls for Mystic River.
Yes. Whereas last year, if we had this formula, it would have been 54, 45 for Groton and 60, 71 for Mystic River. So option one is $60 per call. We were projected 6,000 calls, Mystic River was projected at 1,400 calls again. So that would give those totals. Option two, there are three metrics that will be calculated with this budget amount. And each year we would explain any increase or decrease to the base budget, which would be the prior year's budget before these metrics are calculated. And the formula applied to this current fiscal year would be cost per transport would be $472 per transport, which is what we would receive at Groton Ambulance from our revenue cycle, whether that be Medicare, Medicaid, self-pay or private insurance. Whereas Mystic River, if they had a $1.8 million budget and there would be, at the same amount of calls, would be $423 per revenue per transport. The subsidies that we would need would be $35 per request. So if you look at the example, we would make a total of $508.74 and Mystic River would be $423 revenue per transport. And the subsidy that we would both need would be $60.36. So there's, the only difference between option one and option two is 36 cents. And they're just different ways of getting to where we would need to be.
I'm understanding.
Yes.
So I have Groton.
I'm sorry, Groton would be $60.36.
And Mystic would need $57.7.
$57.7.
Yes. $57.7, yes.
Yep. And that just plays into the payer mix.
Ambulance funding by itself is very complicated. And for someone who sits on the council or the RTM, I've sat in front of them for 45 minutes and tried to give them the Reader's Digest version of it. And sometimes I think I lose them like at five or 10 minutes. So to prevent this, we've kind of compiled everything together to try to make your guys' job a little easier and to promote a little transparency because we would have to provide numbers to you and the RTM so they know what they're getting. We would still, Groton Ambulance would still submit our full budget to everybody. We're not just saying, oh, just give us the money. We would still be able to justify everything. So just to put that out there.
So the question is, is the $60.36 and the $57.70 exactly to be changed?
Yes. Yes, yes, they both would be on a, on a scale depending on how many calls we did. The more calls we do, the more fuel we use, the more non-transports we have, the more wear and tear on the vehicles, the more, you know, times that our crews get called out. It's inherently, I've already said this in one meeting today, emergency medicine is not a profit business. It's not profitable at all. We, we don't do this for the money and if somebody is gonna get into EMS for money, they are sadly mistaken. And I mean that in the most respectful way. People don't get up to 2:00 in the morning to go help someone they don't know for the paycheck. It takes a special person to wanna do that and to help people in that way. And this is just a different way of reconciling things and showing the taxpayers and constituents where the money is going and why the money is going there.
Yeah, if you could just put a number on it, this is how much it costs. We need reimbursement per call, probably an easier sale. For public launch.
These numbers here represent last year.
Yes.
They're current years.
Well, option one, is those are projected 911 responses based on the last few years of call line.
Okay.
So.
I can tell you right now.
Option two. Yeah.
Option two is just last year. Is last year.
Yes.
That's what you would have happened.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. Well, I, you know.
I'm, I'm really good. I like option one, the work, I mean, I'm sure the folks will come up with a different number. Is tax, is.
Budget season.
Thanks.
I think it'd be less.
Yeah, this budget, budget season. So what do you think this budget?
We're still working together. I don't have a lot of.
I need it pretty quick.
They were, they were due yesterday.
They were due yesterday, yeah. So. We, we have our budget already put together for next year and we did it, you know, with the board of directors and our request this year was $342,000. Something, something changed. So the, the $60 per call is right about where we would wanna be, to be honest. Because either way you work on it, it still comes out to about the same amount for us. $60 or $60.36. So it, it, it's just another proof that it works. And I'm strictly talking about Groton Ambulance. I, I don't know Mystic River's payer mix. I don't, I have enough headaches and sleepless nights worrying about Groton Ambulance issues that.
This side of the river, we seem to have more third party, private payer. Other side of the river, it's Medicare. That's what must be.
I have the formula worked, but both medium and middle, or traditional?
Reasonably, no. Reasonably.
Better than what we have been doing?
Predictable, predictable.
It's a lot more predictable.
On that. Simple. It, it, is that the role this works for me?
I understand. It, it is a very confusing business model because we're not like a traditional business. And I, and I've used this before. If you walk into McDonald's and you order a Big Mac, you're getting paid, you're, McDonald's is getting paid before you get that Big Mac. We're not getting paid sometimes three, four, five months down the line. And I'm still responsible to have that ambulance on the road and ready to respond. And instead of talking about extra french fries, we're talking about people's lives here. So it's a little bit more complex and I, I try to, you know, use that analogy just to, so people can understand. Because there used to be a council member who said, well, you run a business. If you can't run it correctly, then you shouldn't be running a business. And I kinda took offense to that because this is very complex. This isn't just profit and margin loss or anything, you know, oh, well, if we're not making enough money, we'll just increase the rates. We, we can't do that. We're kind of in this little corral and we have to operate within these certain parameters and you don't get a say in what we do at all.
You said in the front.
The people that have no idea of what's going on on the streets at 2:00 in the morning when there is a motor vehicle accident and people are hurt and they, they just, they don't understand it. And it's partially my fault as the head of the service because I should be out there educating the representatives and the government a little bit more. But I couldn't have the time of the day. And, you know, and it's, it's almost like talking to a wall sometimes. Because it is complex and they're busy and they don't have the time to analyze everything. And they, by a stroke of a pen, they do what they feel is best and.
And thankfully, unless it affects them personally, they don't have the experience with it.
I like option one and I like the discussion. For some of you might know, I've been on the ground this week. I haven't seen your side there clearly. That is not all that. I just like earlier to fight. Or kind of pay money time in the fire service. You were. The last time. Get in the auto and auto fight.
It is, and that's not, and that's not only a Groton issue.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's a, that's a nationwide issue.
Part of it.
And.
What we can do to change it. They don't like contracting up to somebody I don't know. If something goes wrong, they say go to public.
I'm, I'm very open and I've received phone calls from friends of friends of friends that have had an issue or a billing question. Sunday morning, I'll get a phone call. I'm, I'm happy to entertain those and I think having a business like Groton Ambulance and Mystic River, it's more personable. We live in the community that we serve and we know people. I mean, I respond somewhere with the fire department and this person is having the worst day of their life because they had to call 911. And a familiar face shows up and all of a sudden their blood pressure goes down, their pulse is less, they're not sweating as much and they feel more at ease because they know me.
Oh, I recognize him, I see him in the grocery store. I know who it's personally.
And, and again, that's a double edged sword because some of the people we deal with, we don't wanna see in the grocery store with our kids and our grandkids because, I mean, let's be honest, we see people when they're doing things wrong also. And it's part of the business that we're in and we don't discriminate if you don't pay or you can't pay. Person could live in a $5 million mansion, they're getting the same level of service as someone who's homeless and staying underneath an overpass. So this is something that is worried about at my level, at Todd's level, not at the crew's level. They have absolutely nothing to do with billing because we don't want them to give different preferential treatment to anybody.
And when I'm working on a crew, I pay no attention.
No.
I also think that people have spoken transparency before. You know, issue, that's personal, to explain it in books, they wouldn't understand. Secondly, what you said is a good. You've just got to know that. That's an issue. It could take quite a while. Don't have that much time to spend on just one agent.
And I think that also relates back to the relationship. I've been doing this for seven or eight years and I've sat here and answered questions for a half hour, 45 minutes and I'm happy to do it. You know, it's, it's about education and being transparent. I submit my entire budget. I have nothing to hide at all and I, I mean, the numbers are what the numbers are. And this just further, you know, strengthens that. So, and I would love if any of the councillors wanted to do a ride along.
Absolutely.
On the ambulance. I, I would absolutely welcome it, even just to come down to our building and see what we have there. It's, it's amazing what my crews do, given the amount of calls that we do, just the sheer volume. It's, I'm blown away every time that I get any feedback. When I first took over Groton Ambulance and I stood in front of the council, one of the council members said, I had the misfortune of having to use your ambulance service. I started to sweat because I didn't know if this was gonna be a good experience or a bad experience. And luckily, it was a very good experience. They said that the technicians were very helpful, very empathetic. And, you know, I took great pride in that. And since I've been there for going on eight years as the president, I don't worry anymore because I know the caliber of people that I have. I know the values that I've instilled in them as being their supervisor and they follow everything. Now, people are gonna have bad days, but for the most part, those are far and few in between. And for us doing 6,000 calls, that's, that says a lot of the caliber of my staff. And I am extremely proud of that, so.
I'll be all the same. Page 60, I was asked to take over. One and three volunteer. Yeah. Did anything? They're gonna have. I told the way it is. I don't wanna see somebody coming in, providing fire care. A contract. Just like to go along with this. Running away that they.
So I'm, I agree with the fact that I'm going to say I prefer option two. The reason why I prefer option number two is because not every call is paid the same. I think we need to look at how we are getting paid. And I know that there is a level of people who don't pay. Pay. And there's a level of people who are paying them. Where you're at least getting a. And then there's those in between. And I don't think that that is always the thing that concerns this or year to year. So I prefer option number two because I feel like it is a more concrete picture and more equitable for both of you and more equitable for, for the taxpayer. Obviously, there's three of us. Would have, would want to, but that is my preference would be. Because I think it captures more of, if one, if one ambulance service is getting more Medicare, Medicaid, unpaid TRICARE, then the other is getting more conference paid. Feel like we need to make sure that that is.
Okay. Great.
I'm talking about option number two. So we're taking the cost of transport. So it's, you know, 2,000, the cost of transport is $2,000 divided by 4,000 transports. How much it is per transport? The revenue per transport would equal the collections divided by the transportation. By cost per transport, it's a budget. Sorry, cost per transport is budget divided by considered transportation. So the full budget is 2,162,176 Groton numbers divided by 4,250 transports. That's $508, yeah, $508 and change per transport. Revenue per transport would be collections divided by the number of transports. So if they're only collecting $1,800,000 divided by the 400, or 4,250 transports, Groton Ambulance is receiving $423 of revenue per transport. So the subsidy that would be needed would be the deficit divided by the number of requests, which gives $60.36 per request. And then you can do the same with Mystic River. Total budget for half, because half goes to Groton, half goes to Stonington. Half is 560,000 plus divided by 1,302 transports, so $430 per transport. Revenue per transport is collections divided by transports. So they are getting $475,000 for every 1,300 transports. So the subsidy needed is the deficit minus the request, or I'm sorry, the deficit divided by the request. You're looking at $57.70. Again, not far off from that $60, but those numbers could change them a different year.
So the only problem that I see is option two is gonna change more frequently than option one. Because of the fact that we can pick up one person in January and they are covered by insurance. And then we pick them, the same exact person up in March, who lost their job and now they're self-pay and we have more money that we need subsidized for that call. So I think the variable rate is gonna change a lot more with option two. Whereas option one is projected, this is what we think we're gonna need. Whereas option two is gonna be like, alright, well, this month was more and the taxpayer or the payer mix was this. So now instead of $60.36, we need $62.36. So I think that it, it would fluctuate more and from an accounting standpoint and a reporting standpoint, I'm good with either one of these compared to what I have, have been doing. So I, I just wanna get that out of the record. And I will do whatever I have to to satisfy the requests and the needs that the town council and the RTM needs. For me, being easier is option one. And option two, I think, is more work involved. And I don't want it to sound like I'm not willing to put in that work because I am. I mean, this is important to our organization. I think you're gonna see more of a change in option two when it comes to requests. If that makes sense.
Do you feel like it does? And, and in this, I'm asking the question, you're losing money by saying option.
I, I do think it's, well, when I did my budget, the amount that I projected to get from the town was 342,000, not to 360,000. So I'm not really losing money if we do that. So I have a little bit of a buffer built into that because if I count on every single penny that I get from the town to keep my day-to-day operations going and something happens like a COVID or snowstorms like we had and, and my call line goes through the roof, well, now I'm operating negative. So me personally, I like to have a little bit of a buffer in there. So my request, which I said, um, was $342,000 and something changed. But if it works out or I get 360,000, that's just gonna be extra for me for any unexpected expenses. My ambulance crashes, now I have to buy another ambulance. And in that time, I have to use my other ambulance or. And in that time, I have to use my other ambulance or, which means you're going to break down more, which means I need to put more money into the maintenance aspect of it. So it, it's a very fluid, um, it's a very fluid budget as it already, you know, from the get-go. So yes, I'm losing thirty-six cents per call or thirty-six cents per request. But for budgeting purposes, I'm, I'm doing okay. So I'm not, I'm not getting rich by any means. And that was never my intention when we started this program. This is bare bones what we would like to see from the town council in the future.
Your thoughts on one versus two?
Um, honestly? It's a guess either way, honestly. It's, you know, are we going to have the same volume? I tell you right now, we're not. Our numbers are through the roof right now. Tell them probably a little time, I didn't say much. One versus two, one's probably the easier math. Probably the easier sell to the. And at large. Two, I think is the more realistic, you said, more realistic approach. We're getting the funds for what we've done. But again, we're guessing ahead.
All budgets are guesses.
Okay.
I mean, you, you take historical data and you make educated guesses as to what you're going to expect to pay.
Yes, history is not indicative of people.
We, we still, we still don't know, you know, with the new people in power.
Yeah.
How things are going to change. They, they could, and I'm not, I don't want to get into a political aspect. But when in reality, we don't know what's going to happen next week. We don't know what's going to happen. I mean, this is the schedule to start in May or June? And you want me to figure out what my costs are going to be next January? A, a set of gloves, a box of gloves could go from forty dollars up to a hundred and forty dollars. It's all really an educated, informed guess when it boils down to it. I, I mean, I wish we knew, all right, this is all you can spend. And at the end, when that money's done, you can't do anything.
No, we've got so many calls.
But, okay, we did five calls today, we're done for the day. That's not how it works. I mean, I just know Jill. I've, I've had my crews call me up and say, hey, can you call Fire Alert and tell them we're closed?
Oh, yeah.
I'm like, I, I can't, you know, because that's, we, we just, it's not part of the business.
Not part of the business.
So.
And that's the thing, it's really not business.
I think it goes a little bit deeper. All the money. Rich, erect the vehicle, also buy a new vehicle.
All the money cost stock. Let me tell you, Stockton's having trouble getting their op people.
How do you relate to the Stone?
Yeah. The river runs basically right through our PSA.
Really?
So, you know, we've got, uh, our boundary on that side is Cove Road. I went to, uh, Planbar District.
On the initial reading, I was leaning option two, which I still do, I don't care, you know, hope we need a one. I feel like we're doing math or something here. You're math?
I.
Yeah, you know, and if, if you, if you, you know, to me, if you have something legitimate saying these things are going to go up this year, increase that base a little bit. Either way, it's been guessing, okay? You know, make adjustments.
Well, that buffer is just for Rotten Ambulance. Based on these numbers that we're looking at right now. So I don't, he hasn't done his budget, so I don't.
Honestly, and don't take this the wrong way, but the percentage of our income that we get from the town doesn't really play into, the town is our buffer. Our budget is based on everything else we get. If we didn't give you a pen. We'd be speaking, but we could make it happen.
Great, fine. I like that. That's a great approach.
Right.
Not to say, don't give us a pen.
Really? I'm trying to.
That was not on the table. So just to throw this out, option three, would we, we would get a hundred and twenty dollars per request and Mystic River would get zero. To even it out, to make it safe.
So we're, uh.
And for the record, I would be, I would be facetious.
Would either of you like to make a motion?
We're not going to choose one or two right here.
We are going to choose one or two right here and we are making a recommendation to.
It goes, we revisit it.
Because we're, we're.
Goal of the committee is to make a decision. And we can take some time and think about it and meet again next week if you would like to. And I think we can meet and let them be unless you want them. You guys want to make a decision tonight?
I'm going to go for this. I'm going to think of the talk going to be literally guessing. I mean, people, like I say, some people like do math, but they've done this before and will let both of them out there.
Absolutely.
And we'll just make one more.
And I am, I will, uh, motion to. Option.
Yeah. I'd probably put it to a very big policy.
Do you need to? Okay, all in favor of?
I'm tired.
So before we head to general, I think you guys really have done a lot of work on this. That you all are taking the time to walk us all through this. Hopefully, all of the council members have a question.
Well, we appreciate the public's aid. Paying the time. The mayor actually pushing this because I think it's been a long time coming. We can, we can do things better and this is a step in the right direction.
Well, it's been two years ago. You create. Long ways from that one.
All right, I'll take the motion for adjournment.
That is true.
One bigger?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The motion was made by Pacino, seconded by.